Good afternoon, everybody. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Member Benillo?
Here.
Member Stout?
Here.
Member Gellua?
Here.
Vice Chair Fagan?
Here.
Chair Bertolucci?
Here. Thank you. Can we have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Hillary, do we have any public comments on matters not listed on the agenda?
We do not.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is done. And right on to the Yountville Commons Study Session. And Hillary, do we have any comment before we start with that?
We received no electronic public comment.
Okay, thank you. Brad, did you want to say something before we start on that?
Yeah. Yeah, if you can pull up the slide deck, Hillary, I will introduce to everyone who's in the room, and then I'll make some general comments in the beginning. But first of all, sitting next to me here is Aaron Heacock, our new Planning and Building Director. So he's into his third week here with the town. So as you know, Irene Borba retired several months ago, so we're glad to have Aaron back, and he's just getting up to speed. But we have, I'll hand it over to Brendan Kelly here in a second, but I also wanted to introduce Marcial and Kevin from Piatac Architects. They're based in Oakland and, you know, are housing specialists. And if you want to just take one minute to kind of talk about your firm and...
Yeah, thank you for having us here.
Is the mic on?
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for having us here. My name is Marcial Chow, I'm Principal at Piatac Architects. My partner Kevin McCarron's also Principal. Piatac Architects, we're celebrating our 40th year designing multifamily housing. We're based in Oakland, California. We have not done any design work, we've just been waiting for the community envisioning process to conclude, and we're here mostly in a listening capacity.
Yeah, thank you. And I will also mention, and we'll talk a little bit about the housing element and what have you, but, you know, as we talk about where housing can fit in Yountville, obviously there's not a lot of spots, and I think we'll talk a bit about that. And I do have worked with Piatac in the past, and if you Google them, you'll see their reputation and their experience. Before I hand it off to Brendan to oversee the study session, I did want to explain, which I have at all the other meetings, about a year ago, the Town Council adopted this new handbook. And part of the handbook was, in essence, how we have meetings and how we organize different procedures and protocols, et cetera. The idea of a study session was something that they promoted as a less formal Brown Act or formal meeting. When we work under the Brown Act, we have to, through the Clerk's Office, have public noticing, we have to publish an agenda, we have to go through a lot of steps that are required. However, in the regular council meetings, if you've been to those, you know, we have a series of agenda items, and the public is given a time where they can come up and talk up to five minutes on the subject. And, you know, you listen and obviously deliberate, it's a much more formal process. The council wanted a more of a community dialogue, so we created study sessions. So this is your first one. I know that I will talk a little bit about Measure S as well, and talk about what it's all about. But the idea, again, and this will be Brendan's job to facilitate, is, you know, if there are questions in the middle, this is where you can stop and ask. It doesn't have to be such a, you know, formal, "Take public comment, take, you know, deliberations", et cetera. Because really, today is about listening, and it's about working through the process that we started, and that was approved by council. And for those in the audience, I will explain that Measure S was a voter-approved initiative, I think it was five years ago now, or six maybe, that the voters approved a basically 1% assessment on hotel rooms throughout the county, such that that money would go for workforce and affordable housing. And so, to give you the numbers, because someone asked a question, I think this year we're budgeting for about $700,000 in revenue that will come into the Measure S funds. And the most meaningful expenditure that was made, which was about $3 million of Measure S funds, was the acquisition of the school site. And as we talk about housing and workforce housing, and talk about the limited sites, it's clear that the school site is a focal point. So that will be the focus of the study session. We will talk about idea envisioning, which is the phase that we were focused on, but I know Brendan will give an update on the interim phase, which is all the stuff that's under construction, that we're working on, that we hope to have finished by the end of the year, or at least by February. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, and this is the clicker, so you can drive.
This is my, I think, my third commission hearing of the week. It's not even Friday. Do you mind if I sit here and click away?
Just hold the mic closed, so that it can record you.
Hillary, is this close enough, right?
Like that? Yes, good? Okay. Good afternoon, before I destroy the clicker. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brendan Kelly, I'm here joined by my partner in crime, Kerry Morgan. We are the Kelly-Morgan part of your kind of lead design effort, for this effort, for the idea envisioning phase. I know that I'm not going to embarrass myself by trying to... That's the clicker, here we go. The purpose of this meeting, let's, it's not a lecture. We're, if you have questions, if there's something that's going on, please put your hand up, and we'll address it. It's easier to kind of do that mid-conversation. It starts with sharing information, it ends with collaboration. This is part of a spectrum of engagement, is my term, and there's no bad ideas today, there's certainly no silly kind of questions, all kinds of questions are welcome. If I know them, I will tell you the answers. If I don't know them, I will make them up, just like every other architect in the world. There are no decisions that are required today, we don't need you to make decisions. I just want to make sure that you're aware that, like, we're looking for a conversation. We are going to start with the Yountville and kind of housing in context. Brad's going to do that piece. We're going to talk about a very brief history lesson on the Yountville site, in case you or those listening are not aware of it. We're going to talk about some of the assets and constraints, talk about how we got here very quickly. We're going to give you an update on how it's being used and what's being designed right now. And we're going to go through the policies. This isn't a body of, that has to make policies around housing. The 253-page housing element that is within the general plan has a lot of adopted policies, and we're going to summarize them very quickly, so you know that we know where they are and what they say. And it's important that everyone else knows that we're not starting at some blank sheet of paper. These are very, very exhausted covered pieces, whether it's multi, who it's for, what the demographics are, and how we got there. We will talk about the famous RENA numbers, Brad will touch on that also. We're going to give you some scale comparisons about why probably single-family zoning is probably not the only tool to use on this site. And we're going to talk about some of the amenities and context with the rest of the town, and the civic storefronts and walkability, some of the other pieces outside that make housing an important piece. And then we'll sort of show you some very basic ideas that we showed Parks and Rec, and then we'll show ZDRB, and how we're kind of trying to think of the site in terms of edges and activation. Does that make sense? And then we'll kind of continue the questions. Again, I don't want to race through here and then go to questions. If you have a question, let's please talk about it. So here we go. Brad?
This is me, right?
Yep. Okay, so, housing in California, let's start there. In 1970, the housing element law was adopted, and it was adopted in, you know, in reaction to what was considered a housing crisis. So, you know, to put it in context, I was born in 1970, okay? And, you know, for the last 50 years, what I refer to as a long emergency, we've continued to make progress on, and I think a lot of policies have been adopted at the state level, and clearly, you know, it's a major, major issue at the local level. And I think, you know, there are many battles and wars that go over RENA numbers, and the intent, which is letter C here of RENA, was really to require that local municipalities zoned for housing. It wasn't about building initially, it was like, we need to make sure that everyone is zoning for, you know, additional housing, because a lot of communities were in essence saying, "No growth." And so California came in, adopted the law, and so we're now into the sixth cycle. And so you go through all these different cycles where you get a RENA number, which is a regional housing needs allocation, and this comes through, up here it's ABAG, which is the Council of Governments. So this flows through the state, HCD, through these regional planning groups, and it ultimately makes its way down to local jurisdictions where you get a number. And our number is 72, which, just so you know, is an extremely low number. I came from 3,000. So, you know, 72, when I got here, seemed like, okay, 72, is this an issue? And I was told that, you know, we were done with the housing element, but I learned quickly that we weren't. And we had a back-and-forth with HCD for almost a year, and I know Aaron had the similar experience in St. Helena, where a lot of the new rules are changing, and I think there's a lot of issues as we get into, you know, what are laws that are now forcing construction and creating penalties on local agencies. And, you know, the death penalty is basically this idea that they're going to come in and take your landage authority, but a lot of people refer to the builder's remedy, which in essence means if you don't have a certified housing element, then builders can come in to build stuff without any discretionary action of the ZDRB or the council. They can just come in, and if you don't approve it, they're going to build it anyway. So all of these things are very scary to local jurisdictions. But thankfully, through a lot of back-and-forth, when Irene was here, we were able to certify our element, but as Aaron is learning, and here it is, and it's online, and it's available, it's a very, very thick document. The general plan, as Brendan pointed out, is the overall document that includes the housing element. But the housing element is almost now as big as the general plan, so that kind of tells you how the laws have evolved. So we're fortunate to have a certified element, but in order to make that work, you know, we are going to have to build housing. There's not, it's no longer just a zoning requirement. And so in our housing element, there were sites that were identified, and we did this before we acquired the school site. So the school site is not part of the current housing element, it's important to note out. The main school sites were actually the Catholic Church, and I don't know if you know this, Michael, but the French Laundry Garden was identified as one of the sites. And I think that, you know, we look at those, we definitely, and this is where Piatac was helpful, you know, at least nine months ago, is we tried to work with the Catholic Church on, this is how you can do it, this is, you know, where you can build, et cetera, et cetera. But there wasn't an appetite at that time, and I haven't heard since that time, an appetite for them to build housing, you know, on an essence, what are the vineyard properties. And, you know, obviously you can't, you know, you can lead the water, or the horse to water, but you can't make it drink, so to speak. And I think that it's a very challenging issue when you're trying to get people to build housing, because for a lot of different reasons, there's concerns. They actually, everyone has heard of NIMBYs. They adopted a law this year that they called YGB, which was "Yes in God's Backyard," so they made it much easier for churches to entitle and build housing, but they still have to want to do it. And I think the other important thing, which is to see up here, is that HCD, Housing and Community Development, does not count housing that's built on state property. So there's been a lot of talk, "Why don't we just build it up at the vet's home?" That won't count. So, I mean, I agree, and I think a lot of the community agrees, that they should be thinking about more housing, but even if they built it, we would not get credit as it relates to RENA, and that's just part of the law. So, number three, local and regional need, right? So there's a lot of reports out, I think Brendan's going to reference a few, I may go through some stats, I'm not sure, but, you know, the needs are vast. And Measure S was approved, you know, by the voters to help this need, and it's paid for by visitors to Yountville Hotels. So when someone checks out of one of Allen's hotels, 1% of that goes into this fund, which as I mentioned, is about $700,000 a year. So significant. And we have, and I can go, well, let me say, just quickly before I go to the statistics on our hospitality service workers, because that's obviously the nexus. There's a great need for service worker housing in the region, and I'll talk about that. But there's also a housing preference policy, which gets into how do you make the connection between any new housing and any needs? And I think that gets into how you address fair housing laws, et cetera. So I don't want to go too deep into that world, but that's an important part of this. So, I don't know, thanks. So in terms of our local employment, based on the general plan and the census data, we have roughly 3,000 jobs in the town of Yountville. And, you know, in comparison, we have only 1,100 residents that are currently in the workforce of about 3,000. So we have far more jobs than we actually have residents that have jobs, based on these statistics. And over 50% of the jobs that are in the town are in the service and hospitality industry. This is part of our general plan, you can kind of see the graph, but this is available in the back, so that I know that sometimes these things are hard to read. And then you get into the income related to these jobs and so forth, and these are important statistics. The other, and where do they come from? This is, you know, we did a survey, and thank you for those that provided data about your employees, but you can see that roughly half of the service workers in Yountville come from Napa. And then you have kind of this spectrum of all these other places where they come from, and only 5% of them actually live in Yountville. The other thing we tried to gather data on was sort of the commutes, because you can see that about 90% of people drive alone. And so we tried to get data in terms of who, you know, carpools, and who uses transit or walks in bikes, and it's just overwhelming, you know, because of, obviously, a lot of reasons we could talk about. But I think this kind of makes the point, at least from the climate perspective, that we really need to think about how we can build workforce housing in Yountville for our workforce. This comes from a regional report where we talk about the mismatch of Napa Valley housing stock, and this gets into a lot more data. This was recently published by the county. But I think this is something, it's almost overwhelming when you look at this data, like, where do you start, you know? And I don't, I don't think one site is going to, you know, solve the crisis, but I do think we have to be thinking about that, especially with this group. You know, as we talk about workforce and affordable housing, we have, you know, two employer, well, I guess three, you know, obviously business owners, that, two of which are employing a lot of service workers. You know, you know better than I do, you know, all of the issues that your employees have, whether it's getting to work, or finding a house that they can afford. And I think this is something that I just want us to have front of mind as we think about what we're going to ultimately build. And, yeah, I think this report, which again's online, we'll post it when we post all this information, so you can link to all this data. It's overwhelming, but it's important, and I think we need to really, you know, be, I guess, purposeful or intentional about what the school site will do to help deal with some of these housing issues. This is where Brendan goes in, and I can try to answer any questions based on anything I said. Yes, Alan has a question?
Hi, excuse me, I saw...
Can you do the mic thing? Because we just need to record it.
Hey, go, Alan.
Hi, thanks. Is that your name? Alan Tenscher. I just saw up there that the 72 units at five income levels. Could you speak a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, Brendan will give those details, actually, one of his slides, but just briefly, when you talk about RENA, it breaks things into income levels, and those will be on a future slide. So you're required, per the housing element, to, again, zone for, and now build, housing at these varying income levels, which are all ba, you'll see these percentages, but it's based on what they refer to as AMI, which is Average, Median Income. And that's a chart that is published by the county each year. So the county will gather data based on what the average median income is, it's based on number of people in the household, and then it basically divides it, I think, all the way down from 30%, all the way up to 150%. So 100% is the average, but then you're required to provide housing at different levels.
We will get into those specific numbers.
Okay.
Promise. Okay, here we go. Yountville is highly regulated, and obviously man-made for all intents, but not all things are in Yountville's control. The river, the floodplain, the roads, the state roads, the historic traffic patterns, Hopper Creek goes right by the site. But this is a better sketch overlaid with the red town limits. And the Ag Preserve, which is, surrounds, the Ag Preserve and the watershed that surrounds the town limits, is one of the most restrictive parts of what the town can do in terms of just elbow room and growing for houses. Everybody knows this. And there are constraints on the town, and we're going to talk about constraints on the site, but there are no easy answers for this problem, and it's been kicked down the road for essentially a generation. It's something that our grandparents would not have been able to figure out, why you just couldn't go down the street and turn, you know, Farmer Brown's lot into more houses. And we just don't live in that world anymore. This is the, this is every single structure that we hand-drew, along with some zoning underlays. And zoning also has been a part of enforcing only one kind of house, a single-family residence versus multifamily. This is happening all over the country, whether it's in Somersville or in Santa Barbara. This site is within a five-minute walk of almost every single resident, outside of the veterans home, of course, but that red dotted line is a five-minute walk from the north and the south sides of Yountville. It's quite a convenient place for a lot of things, but mostly and especially including You can also see that there are amenities, we're going to get into this in a second, but this site is very connected already through not just the town grid, but walking paths and a series of other open spaces. This is, of course, has been a school, it's a public school, but it really was, until very recently, not a place for public recreation outside of things like the walking path and the ball field. And sometimes, and I'm one of them, architects just like to see patterns. This is one pattern that we use when you take away everything else, including the creeks and the street grids, and what you're seeing in the heart of Napa Valley is kind of a space, an empty space where this school site is. And the question in front of the town right now is, how do you fill this? Do you fill this? And in what way can it sort of honor the, if Yountville is the heart of the valley, we've been told this is the heart of the heart of Yountville. So it's an important site. I want to reiterate that Yountville is a very young town. I know that a lot of people think of it as a historic town, and an old town, and traditions, and the cultural legacy. This is a map of Rome, built, sort of drawn in the same way, with just the open spaces left over. But Yountville is actually at the very beginning of its design process, and there's a lot of, "Oh, don't move that, it's historic, don't move this." But Yountville, and most of this part of California, is actually in a very early part of making public spaces and making permanent homes and other civic spaces. Let's talk about 1940. There it is, the school, Hopper Creek in blue, the school site is in red, and the school, smack in the middle of the site, is surrounded essentially by orchards. Obviously, Highway 29's not there. Slowly, the old town gets gritted, and it gets squeezed in by the highway and the railroad, and again, by the floodplains that we talked about. But you can start to see, even to the south, some of the neighborhoods starting to arrive in the '70s. Most of the people who we talked to, who are really concerned about housing, we show these pictures to, and we show them where their house currently is was a orchard or a vineyard. And the conversation doesn't go 180 degrees, but it does change some of the mindset, which is why we include these. Here's the 1990s, it's starting to ooze around the school site, which used to be, of course, on the edge of town. And here it is, 20 years ago, and pretty much exactly the way it is today. The school buildings are built, the ball fields are clear, the highways are done, the neighborhoods are there, and most people have a very, very set idea that this is the way it's always been, and of course, this is a relatively recent thing. The school, there's an aerial view. This is how we, this is how the town arrived here. The school district had to sell it, whether it was 48 homes, or 48 townhomes, or 42 single-family homes. The residual land value analysis creates a price that the school had to get, the town paid it. It's a remarkable thing in a town that's almost completely regulated, just like Napa and most places in California. It will probably take more regulation to slow down the pattern. Yountville's population is declining, not because people don't like to live here, it's because people are selling their houses, and the people who are buying the houses are buying them for second homes, and they, and then the population declines. That's what's happening. That's what's happening in a lot of towns, and very attractive towns, all up and down California. We've had open houses where, after the purchase was made by the town, the town obviously asked for a lot of ideas, suggestions, and we got a lot, and the town got a lot of them. We weren't actually even hired there, but we sort of came, took some pictures. The interim uses are underway, the buildings have been painted, some of the uses are changing, some of the uses are being designed into it. The library is turning into a wellness center. That's the interior of the wellness center, I think that will be open in January. The construction is going on now. The snack shack is turning into a farm stand. Peter Jacobson is literally, as we speak, planting orchards in the former community garden. Lindsay Hoops has the lease to turn this into a café. There are many things that the town does not wait, need to wait for before the site starts to become functional. And of course, I can't not mention the dog park. The town is going through two events. We're trying to repair the interim uses, which is a restoration thing, and of course, a lot of the visioning thing, which is a land reimagination. So for some in the town, it's confusing. How can you be painting a building and then talking about, you know, housing or somewhere else? But both of those things can happen, and both can create value at the same time. So, Yountville Commons, a name that the town, I think, very appropriately, it's not a school anymore, and the artist formerly known as Prince is a long word salad, so Yountville Commons is the shorthand for something that town holds in common. It's a common asset to everyone. It's not for a specific group, it's not for a specific developer. Like Boston Commons, it's something for everybody, and we are in charge of trying to make sure that whatever, all the alternatives, and we are hired to give the Town Council alternatives. We're not trying to come up with the single best idea. Our principles that we've described do no harm. Yountville's a very carefully cultivated place, it's taken a lot of work to get it to be so Yountville. Form-based architecture, like the building that we're in, was formerly a school, who knows what it will be after a town hall, that's form-based architecture. There's a laundry, that was a laundry, and now it's a world-famous restaurant. There's many examples in town where form-based architecture is the result of maybe not so single use. So we have a bias, everybody has biases, we have biases for simple forms that could have many, many uses over the life of a building. High-quality public realm is already there. We're trying to make a place and not a single project, and we're, of course, in this listening phase, but we are starting to also now sketch a lot of the ideas that we're hearing. And as I said, there's a lot of policies that the town needs to be aware of, and that we're going to talk about today. These are housing policies, they're in your staff report, I think many of you know them. They're talking about everything from integrating recreational uses to supporting parks and They're talking about everything from integrating recreational uses to supporting parks and trails to addressing workforce housing. These are not sort of like sticky things that we're like listening to. These are approved policies that we have to accommodate or at least explain in a very clear term why we can't. This is the arena number. And Mr. Tencher, this is the breakdown in the four categories. I think very, very low, Aaron, is now combined.
The fifth is extremely low, which is part of very low in this category, but yeah, that's the fifth.
Right now in the housing elements, there's four categories. You can see the percentages. I want to make sure that everyone, almost half, 42%, are market-raced housing. And there's also a policy in the housing element that you can't just take the very low income and put them over in the corner of town and just get rid of it. That is, in the, in your general plan, you can't just put that over in the corner anymore. That's been proven from everywhere, from New York to Boston to LA. You have to integrate these, these housing types within the fabric of a, of a housing solution.
Question?
Yes.
What is the ALI right now?
I don't know if you've ever seen that grid, but it's, there's like something 50 to 80 numbers on that. So I could find it for a single person in a single household. I would guess it's around 70,000. It's usually in the 70s now, but then as you, as the household grows and the, and the number of beds, it turns into a big matrix and it, I can, I can find it and share it with you.
You can have your opinions, but you can have your facts. There's a lot of factual information from the census about the town. It's aging. It has a low labor force participation. It has, we know about the income distribution. We know that it's mismatched between three-bedroom houses for a town that's essentially an average of 1.6 persons per household. So we have a lot of small households living in very large houses. And the people who want to move here and work here, who are driving from American Canyon and Vallejo, have, have also live in small households and can't buy 1.6, you know, bedroom houses because developers aren't building more than, you know, anything less than three-bedroom houses. That's, that's not, that's not a way that developers make money. So there's a way that the housing policies can help start to address the mismatch. You can't fix everything on this school site, but you can certainly help the immediate needs, I feel. And of course, the public involvement to get to the housing plan and what we're doing right now is not just this. This is an expert session. Obviously, you're all kind of well-read in housing policies, chosen for, I think, different reasons in your backgrounds. But there are very random public events where anybody can come and there are very specific pieces where Parks and Rec or ZDRB or in this case Measure S and workshops and other parts. So there's, again, the spectrum of engagement that we're having to go through. So let's talk about housing. Housing is one piece of this four-legged table that has to include some open space. It has to include the roads and the parking spaces and the sewer and the electricity and everything that makes sort of civilization work. That's a very small target in my sketch up there. And of course, there's the civic side. And a lot of people think of the mixed use of New York and Brooklyn and North Beach and San Francisco. And I'm not talking about just, you know, the, the shoe store, you know, on the ground floor. The civic piece could be tax accountant's, you know, front office. It could be a town archivist. It could have, it could have many pieces across the range. And we'll, and we haven't talked about that. This graphic talks about, we have to do all of them because every time you do just a couple of them, you end up isolating it and it doesn't become such a walkable viable space. So our bias is to combine them, especially at the center of such an important site in We've had exercises in open houses. We put a lot of images, I want to say maybe almost 100 images up on the wall, and we just gave folks green stickers and red stickers. And they walked through and the instruction was, what do you see? What do you like? And what don't you like? They liked this. They liked trees, they liked porches, they liked gable forms, they liked enclosed outdoor spaces. You can see from this image, it's not too complicated. What they did not like was big square things without a lot of trees and shade and things that kind of loomed over the street and things that sort of didn't look like it belonged in Yountville. Not a big surprise, but definitely part of the process that we're going through. So far, so good? The town scale, one of the exercises that were, that we went through very early on was, okay, well, here's eight acres of the, the school site. What happens when the old town grid block system gets moved onto the school site? In the general plan, there's actually a bias and a policy that says, if you can move the old town grid into the other parts of town, it's easy to walk, it's easy to service, you can park easily. There's a lot of good reasons why that policy is there. The old town grid neighbors this school site, it doesn't go into it. And we overlaid it, you can probably fit 30 houses on it. The interesting part about the old, the old town site is that there's a lot of different size parcels. Some people live on, you know, little postage stamps, some who live in much larger houses with a guest house in the back. But it's part of what makes Yountville, Yountville, is the different sizes and the different scales of old town. Of course, at the very other end of town, not in a quality standpoint, but in a density standpoint, is the, is the manufactured home park, the, you know, Rancho Napa and its neighbor to the south. That's about 65 homes that could fit single, you know, double-wide driveways down the middle. And the point isn't that one's better or one's better because it's higher number or the other has sort of leafy trees in the backyard and you can park more easily. The, the point is even when you go to Washington Park or Mulberry Street, which has sort of middle numbers, there are a range of densities in Yountville. Everybody's living in slightly different ways. It's interesting when we're talking to them in our one-on-one appointments that everyone thinks that their neighborhood is exactly like everyone else's neighborhood. And that's actually, of course, not the case. The one thing we can say is that the single-family zoning and this, and the way that they're zoned out, whether it's old town or the trailer park or Mulberry or Washington Park, will not meet arena numbers. The, the site is too small and the system of single-family houses with garages is too great a demand. It's not just in Yountville to meet some of the numbers, especially for workforce housing. We spent some time before Parks and Rec and after Parks and Rec. We did not show this until, we didn't, we didn't really finish this exercise until after the Parks and Rec meeting. So if people are wondering why we didn't show this, it's because we came out of that meeting and said, we have to do more work about the amenities in town. This matrix can show you all the public amenities. Some are more active on the left, very high, like swimming pools and baseball fields. And some are quite low, like art, you know, public art walks and the rest, and the public restrooms. You can see, whoop, you can see that picnic areas and seating are almost available at every single park. There's a, a number of things in the dark green that are only available in that park, like a bocce ball at, at Veterans or the tennis at Vineyard. There's a lot of playgrounds. The dog park is now only available at the common site. We didn't, the town didn't have one before. So as a reminder, when we see these amenities spread through the town of Yountville, the pink is the bike network, which is obviously a really important part of the mobility options for here. The town doesn't need more amenities. The town needs more residents to use the amenities it already has. That's, that's our kind of like, well, you know, no, it's kind of duh. But the nice part is that a great many towns, including the one to the south, is struggling to build amenities for the residents it has because it doesn't have the funds that Yountville has. So Yountville, for all of its challenges and especially building housing, building amenities for that housing is usually quite a sunk cost and very expensive. And in this case, you actually don't need to build a lot of amenities because they're already here. That's, that's our personal bias. And we have to show that work when we don't include three pickleball courts, a basketball court and a swimming pool, right? So what's civic? Civic, we mentioned, is not necessarily just the shoe repair store, which of course is kind of the proverbial mixed-use punching bag. You can have very thin civic storefronts that go with flower stands. You can have very large ones that go with coffee shops. This is an easier way to describe graphically about how, about how the front of a ground floor in a civic environment can be used and zoned so that it creates a little more viability. And why do we want that? We don't want that because we, I mean, Yountville has a demand right now on all kinds of storefronts. It's a very competitive environment. Scarcity creates value. That's not a difficult concept. But there are not a lot of spaces for residents serving retail or businesses or retail or neighborhood-serving civic pieces outside of the community center and other places. It's very difficult to just get an office if you're a tax accountant and you just want, you know, someplace besides your living room to work. So it's possible that within this project, the civic overlay can be met for residents, not, you know, another wine shop or wine tasting environment. For all of the value that those businesses are bringing and all the visitors that they're bringing, who literally are creating the funds for Measure S, there's other things that are missing for the same kind of spaces. This is just really an amalgam. There's all, it's more than just shops. There's all kinds of active ground floors and the more that you can make an active ground floor, the more interesting a neighborhood becomes. It's one of the reasons why people like to walk down Washington Street on a Friday night. There's a lot of things going on and just like downtown Napa and on First Street or St. Helena on a Saturday night. There's no, there's no reason why neighbors can't find the same kind of vitality in a small section on Yount Street. All right, so we're almost done. So far, so good? This is a, this is the aerial. It's really hard for a lot of people to kind of start thinking of physical things with abstract information like an aerial photograph. So to simplify physical things into abstract ideas, we start to kind of color things. Every, you know, lawyers use words and abstraction, architects use diagrams. The green, of course, is the open space. The, the orange is the roads. You can see the hardship of this site, which doesn't have a public way on the Hopper Creek side or the Hopper Creek condominium side. It's hard to get to and drive around. It's not actually all that publicly accessible. When you think of the Yountville Community Park at the north part of town next to the cemetery, you can drive all around that for three times before you're parking, before you find a parking spot. But that's not something that you can do here at this site, not yet. So this is a little more simplified if we've screened the aerial out from the back of it. You can see ball fields, parking areas, and the pink, of course, is the housing. The, the purple or the kind of gray is what we call civic. Could be a hotel, it could be office space, it could be a church, things where the public is welcome. Obviously, the, the homes are not publicly, public spaces. So this is what the town was looking at when the school district offered it for sale. There are no public or civic spaces outside of the town hall site. And there's a lot of pink, essentially the completion of that cycle that you saw, where finally the center of it just gets swept up with housing, single-family housing. And the, the creek is an easement and the green here on the, on the south part of Fennel was a, essentially a stormwater management facilitation. There are the 42 townhomes, not much better, but again, you start to see a town grid and the town hall in gray left, left, but not a lot of, not a lot of, you know, this, not a lot of things that are sort of where one plus one equals three. And in this site, because of its importance, no, nothing will have the luxury of only being one thing. It has to be additive. So this is a diagram, talked about this. There's the original site edge and even the school district had to kind of pierce the site for more edges, in their case for private garages. In, in our case, we're definitely going to have to sort of start to build roads and parking into the site to make it more useful. So we're almost at the end here. This is the ball field in the lower right-hand corner. The baseball field has a lot of memories in this town. The town hall is up there, is, is lower left in the gray. And this hatch striped thing, we're just showing sort of simple sketches. Nothing's been sort of like organized for formal presentations outside of these committee meetings. These are study sessions. I asked Brad, I'm like, do I have to do like a fancier diagram? He's like, no, just tell, just give them your work product, they'll understand it. And, and you can start to see the roads and the, and the fire access for houses. But again, not a lot, but, but edges on parks and edges around civic areas start to matter. This is the ball field moved to the upper northeast corner. And there's a lot of people who we've talked to like, hey, just put it back in the corner where the dog park is, you know, and just, and then build housing on Fennel and Yount. That's what this solution would look like. The park becomes a much less public thing in this, in this program. So we're showing these things not because of my favorite or your favorite, but mostly so that we're going through this so that we can show the entire town what the alternatives are and what happens when you move open space and where the housing sort of moves to and where the civic spaces move to. We're also not showing any of the existing school buildings. Some of them are valuable and some of them less, less so. Here is the ball fields on Yount Street. A much more public throughway than Fennel, for example. You can see the pool size for scale, you can see the, the snack shack, the light green is our, our shorthand for things like the dog park. We know that people want to see the, some of the amenities, whether it's a pool or a dog park. We, we're trying to show those, not diagrammatically, but like, oh, that's how, that's how big a dog park looks like on this alternative, for example. And of course, we're always counting the square footage or the number of housing pieces. And again, we're struggling with, how do you get a road system in here to make it efficient and not cover it like the school district design? This is, from an urban design standpoint, a very logical thing. You would put, you would put an open space right at the corner of two things and then build public streets around them. And for all the people who are shocked when they're like, hey, what did you do with town hall? That's not really the point. I don't have a bias about the town hall. It's a lovely building. There's no desire to like move it anywhere on, on our side. But in terms of our showing alternatives to the town, we have to show things that move housing. And what happens in a scheme like this is that you have housing that's on all sides of, of a, of a town square like that. So, and that's moving it into the center. Again, we haven't really kind of studied a lot of these things outside of just kind of diagrams and square footage countings. And that's kind of where we have left it. We're, this is our, kind of what I would call our, not our default, but, but where a lot of conversations start.
Thank you first, thank you. There's a lot. And I think now we'll facilitate dialogue, but as we get back to the timeline, I just wanted to mention one thing in that we do intend to add one meeting, which will be the next council meeting, November 5th, where staff will prepare an update prior to the ZDRB for two reasons. One, I think there's been a lot of feedback that Brendan has received, both on, you know, both on process and concepts. And I think we haven't really presented any concepts, other than just all of these sort of things that are idea provoking. But I do think like the ZDRB meeting will be what I hope to be some concepts that the community can react to. Because I will tell you, my experience, like half the people want to create the concepts or whatever number is, a third, most people want to react to something like that's a concept. Because it's hard, you know, in many, to kind of visualize, okay, what are, what are we actually talking about? How many units? I want to like see it and touch it. So I think by having a meeting or an update is really what I'm thinking, and it will be part of a regular meeting on November 5th. The council will be able to see it, you know, the community can come and we can, we can talk about process, et cetera. But I also want it to be a little, it'll give an extra week for ZDRB because I know that's, we have one ZDRB member. There's always like, when we publish stuff on Thursday or Friday and the meeting's Tuesday, I wish I had more time. So I think that our hope is that in the November 5th council packet, that there will be sort of a preview to the ZDRB meeting. That will be a study session, so similar to this, more of a dialogue. But I think there's an opportunity there. And I think some of the ideas that I know Brendan has shared through the community members will outline or will sort of flesh out the December in 2025. Like how do, where do we go after the concepts are on the table? I mean, what is it? All it's showing is open house and, and town council meeting. So there'll be more, more details to that. So there'll be more, more details to that that'll be presented at that November 5th regularly scheduled town council meeting. So Brendan, I know, I guess, when I've done this, I've walked around with the mic. I think people can come to the podium. Obviously, this is now time, Chair Vertolucci, for you to help us facilitate the dialogue.
Sounds good. Does anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to add? Please, anybody? I mean, you're here.
Question, suggestion?
Ideas?
Mr. Tencher with his hand up.
Always, always. Alan Tencher, I'm looking at the above moderate.
Mr. Tencher, if you just want to move, you're right under a speaker. That should be better. Thank you.
Marvelous. Thank you. So I'm looking at these RENA numbers, and I see above moderate income, 30 units. And we've already said that one of our biggest problems is second homes. So are we just not dealing with the elephant in the room, which is the predilection for second homes in market rate or slightly above market rate housing? What's the point?
Yeah. First of all, I found the grid, which I can post to the web. And when you get into, and I want to make an important point in my mind. The point of the school site is not to meet the RENA numbers. So when we look at those numbers, it's not like we're going to design a project that's 72 units and it's going to be 30% this, 30%. Because there needs to be a more broad approach to meeting those housing element goals. And there are many policies that are being, I guess, tested, some of which, you know, I know in St. Helena, you know, they're talking about parcel taxes. Some are talking about second home taxes, you know, sort of, I guess, what I would call deterrents to the issue of second homes. And then there, you know, the other side is the incentives. How do you, you know, again, create those things? So I think those are statistics that reflect the housing element law, which, you know, you get into ADUs, you get into a lot of different strategies for attempting. I don't know of any, at least now that we're shifting to construction, I don't know of any jurisdiction in the whole state that has met the RENA numbers, just so you know. So it's one of those things that people don't like to talk about, but truthfully, it has been a goal. It's been a zoning goal initially, and now we're getting into construction. It'll be very interesting to see what sort of teeth get put into that law so that, you know, there is more skin in the game, if you will, so that jurisdictions are forced more than just incentivized or so forth. So I think that's important, but I do think, you know, when you look at this grid, I will tell you 100% to answer your question from before, Rob, is $90,000 for one person living in one household. So that's now your average median income in Napa County, $90,000. I mean, I'm sure I could ask Alan and Michael, how many, what percentage of your employees are making $90,000? I'm guessing it's probably a low percentage. So it exacerbates the problem, right? And then you get into all the, you know, down to, you know, 50% median income, which is, I don't know why it's not half of that. That's why I'm like trying to do the math, but it's showing 51,000. So anyway, I think that this is just where it feels overwhelming, at least to me, when I start to read all the studies and what have you. I think for, yeah, and I think we're here at the Measure S Committee. So, you know, the point is like, we have this funding that we talked about. How do we put it to the best use? How do we create that nexus, you know, with our workforce? Meanwhile, trying to, you know, achieve some of the goals that are more broadly outlined in the housing element. Yeah. Are you going to beat Phil Donahue? You got to get on your feet there, Fran.
Sorry. I just got hired. I'm in training.
You're doing well. Jennifer Brewster, Tug McGraw Foundation, based out of the Yountville Veterans Home. But I promise Brad, I'm not here to talk about ball fields. Just a quick, because I am a stakeholder up there. I've been existing for 21 years with Tug, but 14 years up on the Hill. My question is, is there a way to leverage, understanding that the amount of homes that you build here do not count on state? Because it just irks me that we've got 1,000 veterans, 1,000 employees up there and we have a major staff problem up there. How are you going to prevent or who is going to manage, like, these workers that work at the Yountville Veterans Home to not come and get into your workforce? Has that been talked about with Lindsay? Is there a way that we could leverage and start putting pressure to also start building our own workforce housing up there and not depend on nurse registry to staff that place?
Yeah. I think it's a really important question. My experience in my previous jurisdiction, which was similar, was with the Navy, you know, and we had Naval Bay, San Diego right adjacent to us, and it just sort of drove us all crazy because of the demand for sailor housing, why they wouldn't count it, because they use our roads and our restaurants and our parks. And it goes back to the origins of zoning, like it being a forcing mechanism for local agencies to zone. So I do think the law has to evolve as we talk about construction. And I, I think, I heard, and maybe you know, Aaron, but I know that when Napa Valley College built housing, and there was also some housing that was across the street at the, I guess, the state hospital or whatever it's referred to, that did get RENA credit. And I think this was a Bill Dodd move that I think was like a carve-out legislation. So I'm not really clear on how he accomplished that, but it's something that I do think needs to happen. And I think a lot of this, as you know, comes back to obviously funding and priorities. And I think we can all, you know, of course, I guess lobby or try to influence vets home. I've heard the secretary, you know, and you've heard it too, Jen, in terms of talking about housing. I did note that the new administrator has a housing background to some degree, so I do believe that that conversation is happening. And I think I would very much want to be part of the conversation in Sacramento about how state land needs to be discussed as part of the RENA process. But it's going to take a change to the law. I mean, that's the bottom line. So I'm happy to work with you on that. I haven't met the new administrator, but I'm hopeful that she's like-minded and we can, we can figure out how HCD and Calvet can have a conversation.
It's adjacent to the state land issue. There's, there are things that you can do that solve problems that don't address RENA. One of them, we've talked to staff, and we've talked to a number of folks who've come to see us in our appointment hours, is just the need for, you know, a boarding house. It's a, it's a very old term, and boarding houses used to be up and down California for essentially apprentice or transient housing. And it includes some of our kids coming home for the summer who really don't want to live at home, and we can't afford to sort of put them up anywhere, too. So it's a why, it's not just the sous chef who needs a six-month assignment and who's driving all the way from, you know, Vallejo or even further in some cases. The group house category that goes around college dormitories, group homes at the, at the vets, college apprentice housing is an immediate need today in Yountville from the employers, the largest employers in Yountville, accepting the veterans home and including the veterans home. There are folks who come for less than a year, and it's usually a single person, and they would love to not have a car. They would love to walk to work. They would love all the amenities that we talked about today. And that is not anything about the RENA piece. That is a rented or accommodated thing that at some subsidy, without a car, could solve many, many problems. And some of the alternatives that we're going to be showing definitely will include those kinds of housing solutions, for sure.
I rarely need amplification. I'm wondering, though, has there been any even chat about renovating Holderman to be a single-family or single occupancy home, anything like that? Have you heard any rumors about that?
The rumor I've heard, which Jen can, I guess, confirm or deny, was that because of some of the issues that's going on with the new skilled nursing facility, that Holderman will have to remain open as a, sort of partially as a hospital until they can work out the issues at the new SNF. Is, is that a fair way to say it? So I think they're always thinking, adaptive reuse is hard with old buildings. I'll just tell you that. It can be done. You're seeing a lot of that discussion now with, you know, post-COVID with office buildings, you know, even in San Francisco, because no one's going back to work. So how do we repurpose these buildings? But when you get into fire and building codes and you get into the issues related to that, it's very expensive. It's not as, just as easy as just sort of putting up drywall. But I don't know, and I know those are a lot of old buildings up there, and it feels to me like the adaptive reuse of some of the old spaces up there would, would probably be cost prohibitive relative to just starting over.
I think the Holy Land, and I'm not speaking for the home by any means. I don't represent the home by any means. I want to make that clear. But I do think that the Holy Land is if you go past the museum, go to the right, is if you're going to the swimming pool. There's an area where they call the old chap, there's a couple of employee homes, but there's an area there that I thought was, when Governor Newsom did the, looked at spaces that could be available and identified the home, I think it was the meadows as well as the Holy Land in front of the museum. But I do think it's, I love Holly. She's really great. I think she has a great demure. She's our new administrator. She does have, come from a background of housing in Ohio. I think she's drinking through a fire hose, just understanding that huge town up there that's on the Hill. But I'm very hopeful that this is going to be number one on their agenda, besides getting that new skilled nursing facility open. So it's my hope that we can put some pressure on in starting, matching what you guys are doing here, because, you know, my partner's a Navy SEAL, go Navy. And I want to see that veterans home serve more veterans, because we need more staff up there. And it's really frightening to me that when you hear legislators ask the million-dollar question, there's 600 acres, 560 vets living up there, and $100 million budget, and divide that by that amount, it's frightening. And I think we really are at the time now to, to make a change, and I really appreciate what you guys are doing with Measure S here, because it leads the way.
Yeah, I think, what I'll say, and I know you don't represent the vets home, but you're up there every day and you're very involved, and I think I want to just thank you publicly for helping me understand it. And I think, you know, there's others like Bob O'Neill and others that are very passionate. And I know, I mean, you could argue this town was built on the, you know, sort of the vets home in terms of, you know, some of the influences and what have you. But the thing that I have said to Secretary Sin, which I think is an important thing to understand, especially as we sit here and do visioning, the master plan is not a visioning document. It's not even really a land use document. It's a regulatory document that they're required to do. It's more of a service level document to make sure that, you know, and this is highly regulated, obviously, all the vets homes. I've said, you need to have a vision or a land use document so that you can start having the conversation you just were suggesting on. Where do you put the housing? Because similar to Yountville, I mean, we're talking about the school site, but, you know, we could be talking about the church, or we could be talking about other little nooks and crannies, French Laundry Garden, et cetera, like, but that's not the conversation for today. But that's kind of what a general plan is supposed to set forth, and then as you get into housing elements, et cetera. And I believe, and I've again told Secretary Sin and others, like, they need to have a land use plan, you know, and don't try to integrate it into the master plan, because that's not, those two things don't work together. It's like three or four pages of the 300-page master plan is the land use component. So I'm happy to advocate for that, but I think that's an important thing, because people say, oh, we're doing the master plan. Well, you're not really talking about housing. You're talking about service levels.
I'm not sure who, who can answer this. Would you share the definition of workforce housing as opposed to housing that would allow seniors to live in it? Because it's my understanding workforce has to do, workforce housing definition has to do with an income level, and I'm thinking it's possible that a senior would meet that income level even though they're not working. So I'm just trying to understand. And would that inform any design elements?
It could. I'll try to answer, and obviously, I feel like I'm taking on, you're more of a housing, well, anyway. Here's my answer to that question, but I don't think it's a, it's a legal answer or a legislative answer. I think that when you talk about affordable housing, many people get into the percentages of median income, right? And a lot of people generally think 80% median income is affordable. So that has been a line that's sort of drawn. And then you get into very, very, very extreme and so forth. But, but that's just, to me, based on the industry, kind of what people say, affordable housing is 80%. Workforce, you know, sort of opens that a little bit to what I think people generally refer to as the missing middle, which is, you know, how about the workforce, you know, the teachers, the firefighters, et cetera? You know, they're usually in the 80 to 150% range. So a lot of times it'll go now up to 150%, and 80 to 150, in some minds, is the missing middle. So when you talk percentages, that would be how I would answer that question. And obviously, then you get into things, and I used to, in National City, talk about the three S's, which were students, seniors, and sailors. And, you know, the, when you talk about informing design, you know, one of the things that at least, and this isn't obviously a blanket statement, the three S's, and you could add service workers here in place of sailors, is that they can live in smaller places. You know, you get into then family housing, and obviously, all three of those in some cases have family. But when you think about, okay, what are we designing in terms of what they, architects call unit mix, which is how many studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, et cetera? That's where I think it informs the design, right? Because if you're saying, okay, our workforce is this, we need more studios and one bedrooms than we do twos, and seniors tend to also be able to live again in, in studios and ones because, so those, those things do matter. But I think between the income levels and the unit mix, it starts to kind of get confusing, right? But I don't know if that made sense to everyone. I feel like it does. Yeah.
It's, it is, it's in the, it's one of the policies, number nine on our list, increase housing for seniors and special needs populations. The town is to encourage the construction of accessible housing units tailored to seniors, persons with disabilities, and large families, not a massive market, which is why it's in the general plan, to kind of cover the two ends of the spectrum. There's obviously need for families and assisted living and senior housing. And I think at the end of the day, our alternatives are going to be not so specific to that, but unit mix size, so that we're talking about sizes for this, for this level of concept and visioning, so that it's possible, and we can sort of point to these things. But it's also like a typical, think of, think of some of the housing units that are going up on Soskal right now in downtown Napa, and that is a family project. It has all the parking for, essentially a parking spot for every bedroom, and the middle courtyard is a playground, and there's a little spot over there for dogs. And there's a big dumpster, and that's not for senior housing. And it was, and the folks who manage it, that's not their market. That's another market down the street. Your general plan actually is promoting not these single purpose things. It's not, the town's not big enough, and the numbers aren't big enough to sort of do that.
Yeah, and I think the other informing design sort of, and you brought up the P-word, which is parking. And, you know, I appreciate it, but it's also, to me, always the third rail of the conversation, you know, because you can, you can go to extremes in parking. And I'll just share, because I'm actually interested in, you know, also hearing our employers and hearing about your employees, but I'll share if it's okay, Michael, the conversation I had with you. And then I actually had with Antonio, who, I don't know what his title is, CEO of TKRG or, but, but, you know, one of the executives. And what was interesting to me was both of you had this, and we haven't talked about this, but you had the same point of view as coming from the East Coast and had been in New York as long as you had, where most of the service workers, you know, back east, they commute, right? Nobody has a car. It's like not even a thing, you know? And, you know, both, you know, and both of you, and especially Antonio's, God, I miss it, you know? I'm so tired of like, you know, everyone says California's so progressive, and you come here and everyone's on the freeways in their cars and demanding their parking. And so that was this conversation I had. And I do think as you get into, you know, whatever demographics, you know, whether it be seniors or service workers, I think the car is a conversation I keep trying to have and which drives to the parking, you know, how much parking do we really need? And I do want to make sure I put that, at least when I talk, in the slides where I show the mobility images and where you can have car share. I know it's hard to live without a car in California, but I do think it's possible. You know, I'm not living proof of that, but I do walk to work every day. So, you know, anyway, I mean, Mike, I don't know if that's putting words in your mouth, but I feel like that is, is. I, I lived in New York for 10 years. I didn't have a car the whole time I was there, so I didn't even think about having a car, and it was a relief not having a car. But, you know, New York City has a different set of, of public But, you know, New York City has a different set of, of public transportation, you know, that can get you anywhere in that whole tri-state area in a matter of minutes, you know, which I, you know, it's, California's just so spread out. Yeah. Well, no, it's different, but I think the point I'm getting to is if people that, you know, were waiters or bussers or bellmen or whatever the job title is, could live here, you know, could they live without a car, you know? And I think, obviously, you can walk to work anywhere in Yountville. That's one of the beauties of being here, is it's extremely walkable, but I do think it starts to get into, you know, the parking issue, which I just, I want to say it out loud because it is a third rail and people will, you know, clearly have their opinions. But that's something I hope that is part of the dialogue, which does inform design. I think that's the point I want, because you, you know, we talk about design in terms of unit mix, but parking lots, you know, it's, it's, you know, I had a boss who always said, we're just a parking lot away from a deal. And it's true in many cases, like, if you could figure out the parking, you could make it work and...
Can you manage the expectations of what the design and purpose? I'm just saying... Sorry, can you manage the expectations of the build-out when you say service workers, seniors, and I am going to say special needs because I am a mom of an autistic son that moved to Yountville, now hoping this was a safe place for my son when I go to heaven, but to, I was also a flight attendant for 24 years with American and lived in Chicago, and I did not have a car for the first six years, and because my salary was limited and I knew what I was doing back there in the 80s and 90s, I purposely lived in a neighborhood that I could afford without a car, and also the green space was very important because we played oversized softball, and that community of flight attendants, and I use the hospitality, and restaurants were a part of our cloth, and so we made up our own kind of guidelines. I guess my question is if you marketed ahead in advance for seniors, for special needs, for service workers, that we, you know, parking is the big, big word here, but if you could get ahead of it, I think it would be kind of a cool concept that would be kind of alluring for people.
Well, I mean, I think, I don't want to get into housing preference and fair housing laws, I do think that's part of that conversation. You can provide local preference, I do think there are ways now, especially with people focused on climate change, to deal with what we call VMT, vehicles mile-traveled, or GHG, and factor that into preferences, and I think you can manage preferences, but I can't, you know, unless, you know, and this is where the RENA thing becomes tricky and, you know, people are creating housing for nurses or for teachers and for specific, but in many cases, you know, unless it's available to the public, you don't get the RENA credit. So this is a tricky little, I guess, dichotomy that you have to manage, but, you know, I mean, I think this is why when you see concepts and we start talking about them, I do want people to have the parking discussion, without it being like a third rail, like, let's all, you know, have a rational discussion about how much of that site should be assigned for parking, because it's valuable space, as we all know, but it's also, you know, we're not at a place in California where, whenever I say, you know, and there are communities that are saying zero parking, you know, and that's happening definitely, but that creates impacts in the neighborhoods, we're not, I don't think, ready for that in Yountville, but, but I think it's a good conversation and if it can be people that are working in your facilities, you know, I think it helps because then it, you know, I'd like to think, you know, and I do believe quality of life is better when you're not in your car so much, but, you know, that's up to the interpretation of the person.
There is a, there is a Goldilocks solution that many jurisdictions are trying to find around parking. Brad and I have a knockout fight about parking about once a week, and we agree to, we agree to like, okay, we'll like, you know, sort of get in the ring next week at the same time. It's not really about like parking is good or parking is bad. The code requirements for a bedroom is that that bedroom needs a parking spot on private property off the public streets. There are exceptions, including in this town, for other kinds of group homes like that, but I think that there are some jurisdictions that are, have tested out ownership of common shared cars, whether it's a truck or an electric car or other things, to some success. What we know isn't working is the no parking piece, no parking minimums. That has happened in Portland. Everyone's parking in the neighborhoods and all those neighborhoods who approved the thing are now changing those rules because everyone parked in their neighborhood and right in front of their driveways and it's no fun for anybody. So, so there are, there are no simple solutions, but I think in Yountville, because of its compact nature, there are, it's much easier to do with this project, and again, I've, one of the reasons why we're so excited about this project is that it can be a model demonstration project for other sites, both in Yountville and where people can come and say, wow, they did that here, they got away, there's somebody who's, who's living there that actually lives here and works here, who's, you know, that trip back and forth to American Canyon is now negated, not just someone from Timbuktu coming here because it's a low-priced house, or certainly somebody who wants a low-priced house to buy and now it's a second home and, you know, we're just recreating the problem that we're trying to solve. So the, the parking situation, we are constantly measuring square footage and the parking lots and the overlay, so that Umpqua Bank did this when they were building out, the bank lobby can be a meeting room, and a lot of jurisdictions said, okay, where's your parking for a meeting room? It's different from a bank lobby. So that's a, that's an easy solution when you say, look, the parking spot's there for the bank, and then at nighttime, it's there for the meeting room, and those two uses don't overlap. So when there's a parking lot behind a town hall that can also be used for a house, for a house that's, you know, a block away, that's not a new parking spot, it's just a different time that that parking spot is being used. So there's a lot of different things that jurisdictions across California and the US are being tested on. In Europe, they just, of course, say, no parking, and you're, you know, riding your bike. Mr. Tenshaw would not have any struggle with that because he rides his bike everywhere. But there are, there are a lot of pieces that we're going to be talking about that don't, that will not be ignoring the car piece. We're not going to be showing lovely things and just like, hey, it's no parking and they can all park at the Veterans Home. That's not a, that's not a solution for anybody.
Question for you on something I picked up that you said. You mentioned somebody coming up to purchase a home as a second home. Are any of the units planned for resale or are they all going to be leased? And who is going to run the lease?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question, and we haven't had that discussion really publicly. I think that's going to depend. I do say, and it's sort of a flippant response, but anyone who's looking for affordable unit is usually not looking to buy. You know, they're looking at where they can rent something and so that they can, you know, have an affordable place to live. But that's a complicated question because you also get into the financing and, okay, maybe some market rate units can help fund, you know, the affordable units, and how does sometimes what they call value transfer work in terms of creating affordability levels? Because obviously the more affordable it is, the more it needs to be subsidized to some degree. So you have to think in that context, and I do know that people have talked about, yeah, I mean, and for sale housing also is, you know, you get into the sort of the generational wealth and how do you accumulate wealth, et cetera, so that's a great question and it's sort of a complicated answer, and I think ultimately the community and the council are going to have to make that decision, but I don't think that decision needs to be made before we go through the planning phase because, you know, yeah, there are some design-informed decisions related to for sale versus rental, but, you know, that's going to, it's going to take us, I've been saying, you know, once we get through visioning, we'll have at least a year of planning, and this is where also the market shifts, as you know, it's like, you know, and you're very familiar, like, okay, what's, what's getting built right now is usually obviously what the, where the market is, and I think right now apartments are getting built, you know, obviously, you know.
There are a number of really, number one, these are not places where Yountville needs to experiment. We've had a couple of visitors, like, don't give us Beta Max, give us VHS, we want something that's going to work. And I, I think that's an important contribution from the residents, they like, don't test weird stuff out here, like, just can we have something that works?
Wouldn't that be streaming? I mean, are we dunking VHS anymore? I mean...
I got, I got that analogy personally, for sure. The, the point about, Napa has already started, there's a lot of things happening in Pasadena where land trusts are buying land from the developer, and there are deed restrictions, this is to your point, Alan, is that, okay, it's a lovely home, it's for sale, and you start to kind of incrementally build wealth the longer you're there, so it's not a flip. And if you're there for 10 years, you own not just the unit, but the, but the piece of land or the condominium that's around it. And, and there are deed restrictions that go with that unit, which are very possible and probably, and probable considering it's public money that's behind this right now, is that you can't rent it out, you can't, you know, and you can't have this and another primary residence. There's a lot of very standard California common law that is already addressing the second home passive investment. Those are lovely passive investments. Everybody who's done that in Yountville has made a very wise decision because you are protecting the fabric of Yountville in a very, very conscientious way. That's really, really good for other investors. Now, because of your decision to buy the town, the, the school site, you're also now doing other things in addition to that. You don't have to choose. You can also build with very high restrictions to keep what I would call that market, which is I said, which I would say is very well-served in this town, there's a high exchange value, of course, everybody can sell tomorrow and buy tomorrow, but what the town is in charge of building can definitely be restricted in a lot of common ways that Brad doesn't have to invent.
Thank you. Yeah, Kim?
Hi. I think the most interesting little tidbit that I heard today was the chart that you had of amenities already in town.
New someone was going to like that.
And the...
Ken says you liked it.
No, no, I do like it, because I think going forward, that can help us a lot with looking at putting as much housing on that piece of property as possible. I think showing people that the ball field doesn't need to stay just because it's always been there. We have plenty of parks and paths and recreational spaces. I think for public awareness, I think that's a really important little piece of information that can help.
Thank you. Excellent question.
It's definitely the opposite of what I'm used to and it's sort of this luxury of riches or whatever term it is, but it's also kind of the perils of progress, you know, it's like, okay, but we need more, we need more, and I do think, like, there will be amenities on this site, but to your point, it's like, you know, these are, these are not things driving the plan, you know? So I think it's, it's definitely a good place to start.
Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add, comments, committee members, anything?
Just curious, at what point will Marcel and, and his team become involved?
Yeah, you know, I think, we were talking about that today because they hadn't, you know, it was funny, they'd been up here whenever it was, nine months ago, and I'm like, God, you guys have done a lot since we were here. And I think, you know, this is where I feel like after the, some concepts are on the table, like where the community can react to, you know, what I'll call a concept, which is going to show up, you know, where buildings actually are, and that's where I think then we need to probably get a little more into the unit mix, and I think that, you know, having worked, and again, if you, if you Google Piatac, you'll see like, I guess, how the, and I shouldn't say box, but that's the way I think about it, how the, the bedroom has basically evolved in terms of how you've seen tiny homes and how you've seen modular homes and how you've seen all these like interesting developments of how smaller units are more livable, I think is something that I think where Piatac will be able to come in and support Brendan and, and we'll be able to have a more deep conversation, but I think that's where, you know, there's nothing on the table yet, so I don't want to like start going too far down in the design process or conceptual process, because, you know, again, there's always this concern that, you know, the train's leaving the station and, you know, we can't bring it back. So, yeah, I think after the ZDRB meeting, that would be, I guess, my short answer, you know, depending on how that lands, and I feel like, you know, stay tuned to the November 5th meeting because I know Brendan, again, has some new ideas about how to engage the public and how to get some more feedback, and, and we'll figure out the right time. There's also, you know, budgetary issues that obviously I have to manage in terms of making sure we, as we're doing the visioning phase, we're staying within our budget, and I think as we get to the planning phase, that will be a new budget and that will then give more funding to, you know, get into, I guess, the design stuff that is important.
So the, the public event in December, for example, is that going to be an update?
Well, the November 5th council meeting will be the update, and that will be like, okay, here's where we're at, we're going to ZDRB next, there'll be a preview of whatever Brendan puts together as far as concepts, so you'll see that in the November 5th packet. It'll be a study session on November 12th with the ZDRB. And then I think, you know, and I've seen little bits and pieces, but I think there's idea of, you know, some, some engagement strategies through open houses that, you know, sort of lead into the 2025, that'll be a little more interactive, is that fair to say?
Continuation of the process?
Yes. Yeah, we're not putting this in the mail and leaving, I promise. This is, we're, we're still getting a lot of information. It's taken quite a long time to digest this 253-page document. There are some hacks before we kind of adjourn, I do want to say it's not all just like horrible. We have, it's not a surprise, in all of the limits around RENA and the laws and state and group homes, RENA never, ever distinguished between a five-bedroom house and a studio condominium. They're both units. So you figure it out, right? You're going to see a lot of concepts that can park and that can match some of the immediate need of the mismatch that Brad talked about earlier. The bias for not just Yountville, but for this entire valley, is smaller residents because of that 1.6-person household. And unless we build more of those, all those people living in three and four-bedroom houses are not going to move. There's no incentive for them to move because they don't want to leave their friends and neighbors. And we've talked to a lot of people, and it's one of the reasons why we're sort of not so focused on, hey, this is where the 60% crowd lives and this is where the 80% crowd lives. It all has to be where you want to live tomorrow, because now the kids have gone and, you know, maybe like, all of the, our lives sort of change, and the, and the space we need around it changes. And I think some of the concepts that we're, that we're starting to figure out and organize, and it definitely makes it easier to figure out 72 one-bedroom units than 72 four-bedroom units. I mean, for a developer, they want the four-bedroom for all the obvious reasons, but for a town that's trying to meet a public need that's, that's, you know, burning a hole in everybody's head, is a really easy thing to imagine, and a lot of other problems go away, or at least go down.
Were there any other questions?
All right, Alan, come on, Phil.
I thought he was leaving. Just kidding.
Brad, you and I have talked about this in the past, but about $3 million of Measure S funds were used for this property. Does that put any particular number or percentage on the unit structure that you're going to be needing to build?
Yeah, and I think this is important for the Measure S Committee, I actually, not that this has to be the last comment, but I did want to bring it back to Measure S because obviously your role is the oversight of the funds. I mean, that's what it was established for, and I think when we talk about what's eligible for Measure S, you know, when you read, you know, the ballot language or the law, you know, it does provide flexibility, and I think what we were saying originally, because roughly a third, I mean, it's a little less than a third of the purchase price for the, for the school was funded through Measure S, you know, and we had divided the whole site, including town hall, into quadrants, as you recall initially, this being one which we had already owned, and then sort of the three quadrants, which we were defining as civic, you know, housing and open space. That's kind of what led to the idea that a third of the acquisition should be set aside, you know, for... you know, for housing, or workforce, affordable housing. And, and I still think that's a true statement, but I think as we get into it, like, I don't want to be so literal, because I think it's really more important, as Brendan has talked about, creating a sense of place. You know, that doesn't mean like, here's the housing, here's the civic, here's the park, like, it all needs to be one place. And, and I think as it relates to eligibility, you know, this becomes a thing, you know, probably at our next Measure S meeting, once we're further through it, you know, we need to talk about that methodology. Because, you know, I could make the argument, 100% of what's going on over there is Measure S eligible, because all the amenities and parks, those are all going to serve housing, right? I can make that argument, we just don't have enough money coming through Measure S. That's not going to be, if we could fund it just with Measure S, then we'd be in a great place. But we're going to have to, you know, put general fund money, we're going to have to find potentially other sources of money. This is all going to depend on how we finance the vision. And to your point of, I was trying to, you know, what finance people call value transfer, like, again, back to for-sale, okay. Do we want to sell two lots for $2 million apiece, so that we can transfer that value into more affordability? Those are hard conversations, you know, but that's where I think you have to get to. But out of the gates, again, it was a third, based on just the purchase price and the property we, but I think, you know, that'll evolve depending on how the project does. And I think the, this group is intended to provide oversight, so if you don't agree with the methodology, you know, that's kind of your core purpose, to say, hey, wait a second, you know, you're spending this money on a swimming pool, that's not helping our workforce, you know? And I think that's, you know, at least the oversight. But I, but I, I'm really thankful that you're all here, because I know when I got here, we were kind of like, what do we do? And now we're doing something. And, and I think by having, you know, the employers and having the residents, and, you know, we didn't get into Robin Sandy's expertise in terms of municipal background. But I'm really thankful for this whole group, and Lisa, obviously, you're the chair, and you're engaged, and you're here, let's start with that. And I think that it's an important conversation. We don't, in this town, have a housing authority. We contract with the city of Napa to do that work for us. And that's a whole nother conversation, but I just, you know, and I'm now looking at Aaron, saying, hey, you're going to kind of be the housing guy, you know, we're going to like, we got to talk about housing. And fortunately, he knows it, but I'm not going to put him on the spot in the third, third week of employment. But, but this is a conversation that will never end, you know? You know, I'll leave, Aaron will leave. We'll be talking about housing for the rest of our lives. I mean, I'll just say that, because it's, it's an issue in California that will never go away. That's part of the beauty of living here. But, you know, I'm sure you're hearing, just I'm hearing all my friends, it seems like it's every election, I think it's time to leave California. You know, it's like, I'm done. And, you know, that's partly because of the affordability issue. I mean, we all know, understand that, and, you know, there's other issues that come to play. But, yeah, thank you. We'll continue. I think we're now on sort of a quarterly routine with Measure S, just so everyone knows. If we need to come back as it relates to this, I'm going to, you know, try to be in a place in March with the council that they can make a decision, so we can transition to planning and getting more into the technical work. But if we have to have another conversation about housing, and the council directs us to come back here, then, you know, we'll do it. So thank you again for your service and expertise.
Thank you, Brad. Just checking, there's nothing else that anybody wants to say before we wrap up? All right. Anything else from the committee members that you want to add for the good of the order? All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.